Entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Make a motion for a consideration of claims.
Aye. And that's, the total is one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and one dollars and nine cents. So are there any questions on the bills?
I don't have it.
Okay. The questions I had, the first one was on page one of eight for Fremont County Treasure, item one-nine-one-five-nine, eighty dollars and seventy-six cents. And it listed water rights. And I was just curious on why that was listed under the mail, mayor and council budget line item for water rights.
You have an explanation, Courtney. I know she's got a good one for that one.
Your honor, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
We, we do have a line item under the water fund for that, so I'll make sure that I change that entry.
Okay. It just seemed odd that it was under mayor and council.
Thank you. That is odd.
I was thinking maybe it was overexpending some other, and so mayor and council had a little bit of, had some funds.
We had a space there for it.
For water rights. And then the other, the other question was related to page five of eight. The two items right next to each other, one-nine-one-four-five and one-nine-one-four-seven. The first one was for service sprinkler and repair for sixteen hundred dollars. And I get, my question on that one was whether it was repair, a new system. That one was listed under the tree board. And just what that was for that sprinkler system.
Your honor, it looks like, well, what's Jason's? Oh, J.C. Park. So this underground sprinklers installed at J.C. Park. It says Jason's Park, but it's gotta be J.C.
Yeah.
And I assume the next item was related to that, the ten trees for eighteen hundred dollars. And the only reason I brought up this question, I had a citizen call me last week or so and asked me why we didn't buy trees in Riverton. So I said I would pass the question along when I saw that.
Yeah, and your honor, I saw something that I think the mayor got a comment about that too, or someone did. I know that they compared sprouts with that, and they were looking for some bid prices. And it turned out to be a little cheaper at Sprouts, so that's what they ended up going with.
Okay. And Jonathan, did you have any questions on the bills?
Actually, I, that was one of the, that was the one that someone had brought up to me as well. Is the tree board, is it separate from the city, or is it part of the city?
Your honor, it's, it is a tree, it is part of the city. I mean, it's a, it's sponsored by the city even though it's made up of members, but we appoint the board members to that.
So it's not like rendezvous per se, it's actually, it's actually kind of a sub-board of the city then?
Yes.
I guess the question that I had was, is it customary for us to hire out the sprinkler stuff to, rather than having our own staff do that?
Your honor, I, I think depends on the type of work. A lot of times, when I was talking to Joel just today, he was saying how busy they are just accomplishing the task, going around and mowing. And so a lot of times, and I think they've had a few staff that have been out, so they don't, maybe can't dedicate all the time they can to fixing something. It, it depends on the degree of the difficulty of it, or how much repair they're doing. I think they can handle the little ones, but if it's a bigger project, then they gotta hire it out.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills?
Have we ever tried, you know, I've seen so much advertisement on Pitney Bowls that it was, it's cheaper to have the internet and pull your own postage off of their own account instead of having a Pitney Bowls machine. So I see we've got a Pitney Bowls machine. But that's not my, that's, that's neither here nor there. Right at the front, it's right here. I see American leak detection. Did we get anything from them? Did we find where we're losing any water?
Yes, your honor, and this happened to be down next to Spire, where they've been having a little bit of issue, where there's been extra groundwater and residents complaining about it. And they tried all their avenues. They had, they had determined that there wasn't any leaks. And they brought in the leak detection company out of, I think it was out of Denver. And they did find a leak that was further up, and they're in the process of fixing that right now.
Yippee.
We're not sure if that's gonna solve the problem.
Oh, I don't think it will, but.
But it.
I mean, that's our currency.
That's right.
I mean, that's, that's assets that don't need to be wasted. Thank you. So I have no more.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the approval of claims say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Is there any other business for us, Mr. Weaver?
No, your honor.
All right, meeting adjourned. Nope, yes.
Okay.
Secondly, Councilman Larson, we, we went round and round with Pitney Bowls this year. We're not contacted until we were within, we're within sixty days of that contract, that equipment, of that contract expiring. And we checked out stamp dot com, and we checked out others, and then decided that with our volume of mail, that it wouldn't pay for us to do that. So we, we gave that careful consideration.
Good, thank you.
Your honor, so Courtney, just to further clarify, does the tree board make their own, make their own decisions then on spending and what, what goes in? And is it kind of like rendezvous where they do their thing, and it just gets, just goes through the city, or?
Your honor, they don't have a fund like rendezvous has. They have a line item within the budget of the parks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 'cause your honor, I believe to be Tree City USA, those things that Courtney brought up, but in addition, I think you have to actually spend a certain amount on trees in order to keep that status of Tree City USA. And so I think they, I think they get so many trees every year. That's just something they purchase every year.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further business, meeting adjourned.
I'll call the June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen special council meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at six P M. Would Councilmember Fabian lead us in the place, please?
Mr. Mayor.
I have the pleasure to lead this super flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Rich Guard.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Todd Smith.
Here.
Mayor Ron Warpeness.
I am present, thank you very much. I declare that we have a quorum this evening. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your honor, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Consent agenda, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor, approval of the minutes June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen Finance Committee meeting, and approval of Finance Committee recommendations for June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Your honor.
Yes.
It's the recommendation of the Finance Committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and one dollars and nine cents, for a total of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and one dollars and nine cents.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Been moved in second to approve the consent agenda, it's their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Agenda item number seven, resolution number thirteen oh three, fiscal year thirteen fourteen budget amendment. City clerks report, please.
Yes, your honor, ultimately, our budget amendment includes a transfer of eighteen thousand dollars within the appropriations that you've already approved. Fifteen thousand of that was for building maintenance. As you recall, during the budget amendment in January, we had some H V A C units go out in City Hall, so that was approximately twenty-three thousand. We still are catching up a little bit with that. Also, electricity is really high for us. Almost every line item that the city had with electricity this year is over expended. So we have somehow not been able to project what the increase is in electricity. And we'll try to get a better handle on that this next year. I'm sure there was an increase that we weren't aware of, and, and that's why we're noticing that many line items are, are over. So a major part of that was building maintenance. I have to apologize to my boss because his line item went over. And that's because I took twenty-seven thousand dollars away from it in January. So again, it's just because of the way we try to project things. A budget amendment isn't that easy, because when we do this, as you know, we have a payroll that comes out June twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, let's see, twenty-sixth, Thursday. So we have to be able to project what those salaries are gonna be, what the overtime is going to be, stipends, anything like that, and make sure that we have those numbers in the budget. Because if we go over, as of June thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen, it's, we can't. It's against state statutes, that we don't have that money appropriated for. So it really is a process for us to try to squeeze in this budget amendment, try to squeeze in all the bills, because the auditors even look at the date on the invoice. If we have an invoice that's dated June sixth, and we don't pay it until July first, they'll say, why didn't you pay it? So there's a lot of things that we have to look at for the budget amendment. And I'd like to commend all the supervisors and the employees that make purchases, and look at their budgeted line items, and try to stay within that. There's a lot of things they can't control. They can't control the price of gas and oil, electricity, heat, any of that, that stuff. But what they can control, they do a good job of that, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would the city clerk please read resolution number thirteen oh three by title only?
Yes, your honor, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Riverton, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. This is resolution number thirteen zero three, a resolution amending the two thousand and thirteen fourteen budget for the city of Riverton with the fiscal year beginning the first day of July two thousand and thirteen and ending the thirtieth day of June two thousand and fourteen inclusive.
Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of resolution thirteen oh three.
Your honor, I would move to approve resolution thirteen zero three at this time.
Second.
Been moved in second, it is their discussion on this budget resolution. Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, mayor votes aye, motion carries. Agenda item number eight is a public hearing in consideration of resolution thirteen oh two, B R C grant application for Honor Farm property. City administrators report, please.
Yes, your honor, I'm gonna try to do my staff report for both of these items since they're interrelated. And so you've got the staff report, and then there's a document attached to the staff report, and that's mainly what I'm gonna focus on, because it kind of summarizes these applications that we have in the process. So what we're trying to do is attempting to convert three hundred and two acres of land from state-controlled alfalfa fields to privately-held economic development sites. And there's two parallel, interdependent applications that we're applying for. The first is an application to make the land available for public auction, has been made to the Wyoming Office of State Lands and Investment by Idea Inc. So that's the first application. And then the Board of Land Commissioners will review the application to determine how much they, how much of the three hundred and two acres is surplus to the operation of the Riverton Wyoming Department of Corrections. The commissioners will set the minimum auction bid equal to the property's appraised value. The land identified as surplus by the board will go to auction only if the board is satisfied that there is financially pre-qualified bidder available to make the minimum bid, and that bidder has expressed intent to do so. So that's one application. And that's separate completely from the B R C application that we have to resubmit that we're doing in August. So the, the other application has to be submitted, is sponsored by the city of Riverton, the Wyoming Business Council for grant not to exceed one point five million. Idea Inc. has signed a mortgage and a secured financing from a commercial bait to meet the fifteen percent match obligation for the maximum grant amount. If the three hundred and two acre parcel, or any lesser acreage, is made available for auction by the state Board of Land Commissioners, Idea intends to submit one bid for the one point six-six-two appraised value of the land. This would be comprised of the fifteen percent of Idea Inc.'s required match and eighty-five percent from the Wyoming Business Council fund. Wyoming Department of Corrections will be the beneficiary of the auction proceeds, and they can use the funds that they see fit with approval of the state legislature. If there's only one bid, and Idea makes it with the Wyoming Business Council funds, the property will, will be owned by Idea Inc. But obviously, the idea is to get this out into private hands, and we believe there'll be many people standing in line to bid on this. The auction proceeds will be used for the first repay the bank debt used for Idea Inc.'s match, and then reimburse the Wyoming Business Council for its eighty-five percent of the funds used for the bid. The intent of Idea Inc. is to bring this land to public auction and make the initial bid. Any other developers or investors can then establish a true market value for the land by bidding more than the minimum bid. The city of Riverton has recognized that the Honor Farm land, which is now within city limits, is the only land available for large commercial development for the future of Riverton. North Federal Boulevard and Wyoming Highway seven eighty-nine run in front of Walmart and the three hundred and two acres of Honor Farm land for the entire length of the western boundaries. Traffic counts for North Federal is over twenty-one thousand vehicles per day. Since two thousand and three, the city has made multiple attempts at arranging land swaps and other arrangements with potential developers and the Department of Corrections, all to no avail. New legislation became effective on July first, two thousand and thirteen, which set up a process for auctioning surplus state lands with the proceeds reserved for the state entity which controlled the land. Prior to the date, any proceeds from the sale of state lands went into the general fund and were not available to the state entity which sold the land. So we have two action items tonight. The first one is the resolution, and that is to support the application with the Wyoming Business Council for the B R C, which is the Business Ready Community Grant for one point five. Now, we already did all of this back in September of two thousand and thirteen, but we're required to submit another application, because we pulled our application with them at the meeting that we had a couple weeks ago. The second one is the adoption of the proposed conceptual plan of the Honor Farm property. And we held a public hearing on that back in April to get input about this conceptual plan. And if you see the, the proposed layout plan that's attached to your packet, it shows that there's major street layouts, if where potential layouts the streets could be, and also that the zoning requirement. And so that's what we're talking about here, is just a, a proposed conceptual drawing of what it could be if, if it was purchased and allowed to be purchased. And so those are the two things that we're dealing with tonight.
Okay, thank you. Would the city clerk please read resolution number thirteen oh two by title only?
Your honor, this is resolution number thirteen zero two, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Riverton to submit an application to Wyoming Business Council for a Business Ready Community Grant for the purpose of funding the Idea Inc. business park.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the public hearing.
Your honor, I would move to open the public hearing at this time.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, it is your discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council at this time on this issue?
Seeing none, your honor, I would move to close the public hearing.
Not yet.
Sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Mike Martin. Good evening, mayor and council.
Thank you.
You know, what I think you're doing is good, other than, you know, there are a lot of people that own property on the west side of the highway, and that land is all for sale. And I'm just wondering what we're accomplishing here by getting grant money for the other side of the road when there's a lot of land available for sale on the west side of the highway? So then are you gonna offer this property on the east side of the highway at a much reduced price than the west side of the highway? If you are, then I don't think it's fair to the people that own ground on the west side of the highway. That's my concern. I'm president of a company, an organization in town called Wind River Development, and another gentleman in town, Lenny Koserog, are very interested on the east side of the highway, but I think it needs to be fair to the people on the west side of the highway that you don't offer this ground for sale at a much reduced price than what's already available on the west side. That's my comment.
Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
How much property is available on the west side?
Well, I mean, I actually don't know that number, but it'd be from where the Burger King is, all the way to the Comfort Inn. Not the Comfort Inn, uh.
Hampton.
Hampton Inn, excuse me. But all that property's for sale.
We did have an appraisal on that property, didn't we? So we, you know, it has been appraised, and the property can't be sold for less than the appraised value.
I guess they, they went through this appraisal process before, and the number they gave for that appraised price, and it was a swap, it was a swap for ninety-nine acres over in Landreth, the.
No, no, this is different.
It is different.
Yes, we've had a recent appraisal on the property.
Okay.
And, you know, appraisals are magical things. And, oh, they are.
They are, you're right.
You know, it depends on the most recent current sale, and, and was it done this way and that way and everything else. And I know Rich used to talk to me about appraisals and how mysteriously the values appeared. But as far as we understand, the value of that property cannot be sold for less than the appraised value, and the appraised value was, was higher than what I'm aware of that the west side is selling for.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Your honor.
Yes.
Can I also make a comment?
Certainly.
The, the other aspect, I think, of this was the idea that while there are parcels for sale on the other side, there may be some limitation as to size of structure that could really go in, you know, to those parcels because of the size of the parcels.
Because of the ground, the bad ground that's on that side. Is it the same pretty much on the east side, though, too? I mean, it's like Walmart had to do a lot of things.
Yeah, and I don't know, I just, I mean, you know, depending on the size of building you're trying to put in, I'm not even talking about ground quality necessarily, but just size and having to have enough parking lot and having to, you know, all of these things. Depending on what you're trying to put in, you may be, you may not have enough ground, even if you bought every parcel.
From one seller, you mean?
Well, well, you know, we're, if you look at a developer wanting to come in and put in, say, a business park with multiple businesses in one area, now you end up in a issue where you have a hard time doing something like that.
But British is on all that ground, I think, up to where Bailey's own a piece, so I mean, it's forty acres, fifty acres, I mean, there's a lot of ground in there.
Yeah, how far back, though?
Eighth Street.
Well, no, not all, not, not all the way. I know there's other, regardless, but that, that was part of the thought as well.
Your honor. Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilman Guard.
There's, to, to support some of those questions that you have, and Kate, Kate's in the room, she can help us with a lot of those questions. The real value of ground on, on federal is the frontage, is the street frontage. And so everything that lies off the street frontage, what, three hundred feet, comes back into a whole other realm of development. And I've had two callers question me about this. There's no utilities on the, on the east side of the road. And so whoever does develop would have to put in all the backbone, all the required utilities. The city's not gonna do that. There is some rumors out there that the city would, would fund that at its current pace. The ideal plan here, I don't, I hear Mr. Weaver say that there's gonna be many bidders. That would be a really exciting thing if we had many bidders. But I don't know that we will. And, and yet, what we really need to do is get this into private hands, away from the state of Wyoming. That's the first thing, because we're landlocked from every other direction. We're landlocked to our south and, and to our north, and, or to our west. And so this north avenue is, is probably one of our best avenues. Bailey's owns a large piece of ground from the motel back halfway to Burger King. I don't know who owns that next section, Kate probably does.
Can you come up to the, if you're going to address the council?
I don't know if it's frontage, but I know that Saltskaver's owns some land in that area, too.
Kate Martin, yeah, yes, I believe that, that Saltskaver's own part, and, and there is, it is actually offered in the, on the multi-list. And I, I didn't know about the meeting until about five-thirty, so I didn't have any chance to prepare, I'm sorry. But I do know that it is available quite a bit of it there. You know, and I, and I, if I may make a comment, I, I think probably the biggest fear is giving advantage to competitive businesses with government money. And, and I think that's the perception that's out there, and it may be a reality, that if they, you know, you say, well, this is the appraised value, but when it, once it goes, it's, it's, it's like flipping it from one government entity, the state of Wyoming, to a nonprofit that's actually funded by the state of Wyoming, so it's still never really. So it's still never really private money that gets it there. And so it doesn't let the free marketplace flow as a free marketplace. And I think that that's probably the biggest objection that you have, is it'll disenfranchise existing businesses because someone else will be able to buy the land at a discounted price and go into competition with them. And I think that that's probably really the big rub, if, you know, for that, for what it's worth. That's the perception I see.
I think that's the whole intent of this operation, is to get it into the free market so that we can have that, you know, debate. And this is the first time anything like this has ever been attempted or done, and there may be some rough edges. I don't think any of us disagrees with that. And I think there may be some of us that have some trepidation. I know I was on the council when this land swap thing was talked about and started, and then it went on for something like eight years, and it wasn't very pretty. And comparing this to that, this is a much better process. And it's the only one that we've been able to come up with to get that land out of state ownership and into the free market. And they're not wildly enthusiastic about that either, quite frankly, is the way that I'm interpreting it. And so, you know, change is hard, there's no question about it. And where it impacts existing businesses, I think that change is really hard. But I think, you know, I've looked at this every way that I can, and to me, it makes the most sense and the fairest way. It's upfront, anyone that wants to bid on it can bid on it, can put it together, how it, you know, translates out. But I share some of your concerns, Kate, but I don't share them to the point that I would be willing to stop the process at this point. And I think it's the only way that we're going to get that land into private hands so that our community can grow and benefit and prosper from that very needed piece of ground. And so...
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think it's also important to note that Idea Inc. is putting this application together, and it's my understanding that they can only bid the minimum. If it goes for $1 over the minimum, they're out. So if one other truly interested, ready-to-go buyer shows up, they're going to win that bid. So it, really, the idea is to get it on the auction block. Our sincere hope is that Idea Inc. doesn't get it. Let's get it into private hands and get it developed by somebody who does that.
The private sector.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Assuming that, and it appears as if it will head in that direction, do the other bidders have ample opportunity to see the information that Idea Inc. has that you have as regards to, say, the appraisal? Is that available for view by the public or potential other bidders?
Mr. Moore, would you care to address that topic?
Excuse me, ma'am. My name's Alan Moore, I'm president of Idea Inc. The answer to the question is yes. All of this is being developed and will be in public hearings. The Board of Land Commissioners, if they decide to proceed with this process, will have public hearings in Fremont County. They will be advertised, all of the information in that will be a matter of public record. The Board of Land Commissioners, if they so decide that this land is excess land, will set a date certain. They will set a minimum bid price for an auction that will be open to the public and available to anybody who cares to participate. Just bring your checkbook and show up. That's all it takes. Oh, there is one other thing. In order to establish yourself as a qualified bidder, you need to have available or deposit with the Board of Land Commissioners 25% of the funds equal to the minimum bid. At the auction, there will be a winner, and within two weeks after that, they will need to have the balance of the funds available. So that's what we understand of that process so far. So it will be open and fair and available to anybody. And if the appraisal is too conservative, then anybody who has yent to be in the economic development business is certainly welcome to step right up and bid the true price of the land. If the appraisal is too optimistic, such that the detriments attached to having to build up landfill, put in streets and alleys and sewers and water and everything else are too onerous, then Idea Inc. tends to make the minimum bid, the appraised value. And if nobody else steps up, then that will be the bid that's taken. It's Idea Inc.'s intent after that, because we do have a connection with the City of Riverton, if anybody else wants a part of that land, they can nominate it, and we will have a public auction so that they can bid on it. So that's what we are envisioning, and that's what we are putting into our applications. Now, as to the process of acquiring public land with a Wyoming State Business Council grant, you will notice that we have told the Business Council that if our bid is the bid that's accepted for this land, that the first thing we will do is to repay our bank debt, and the second thing we will do is to repay to the Wyoming Business Council, dollar for dollar, as much money as they have advanced in the grant. At the end of the day, the Wyoming Business Council will be out nothing, the state of Wyoming will be out nothing, the Department of Corrections will have funds that will be repaid by other developers or a bid that is bigger than the minimum. Any other questions?
I think one thing to answer Kate's question regarding a governmental agency borrowing money to pay, to buy a piece of ground from the state, it, I had problems with that as well when we were at the Business Council meeting. And apparently, one of the board members did as well, because he even asked, is this legal? And it has gone back through the Attorney General's office to the satisfaction of everyone that it is legal, the way that it's being handled. And so, but that was a concern that I certainly had initially and wanted to address. But once again, it's the only way that I've seen how we can get this land into the public hands so that we can develop it for the future, and we need that badly. The way that we approached it before, to have a land swap, to find a developer at all, you know, that way just was not open and failed. So, but at any rate, anyone else have any comments they'd like to make?
Yes, step up, Kate, we're still in public.
I actually have three questions. One is, assuming this all occurs, is the city open and willing to participate in a special improvement district to bring the public utilities into this development? That's a real important question for a private developer. The second question is, I don't think my question was answered, can private individuals receive a copy of the appraisal? And the third question is, out of that 300 and some acres, what is the status of the remodelers' park? Is it subject to that?
Certainly.
Okay, so it's not really the 312, and you don't really have the frontage that you're saying, because it's subject to that lease, is that correct?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
The remodelers, whoever the developer is, is on the line to move the remodelers, the remodelers' park to a new location.
So that's a, that's...
So that's an expense to the developer. That's not an opportunity.
So they have to provide the place for it and the expense to move it? Is that defined in the, in the deal, so to speak?
Steve's shaking his head, no, I'm wrong about that.
Yeah, Your Honor, yeah, there's no stipulation. Now, Idea has made the statement that if they got it, they would make that happen. But any other private developer, we can't put that stipulation on them.
However, Mr. Mayor, is there an existing lease, so it would be subject to that lease with the remodelers? I thought I read something in the newspaper about that.
Your Honor, there is a lease with the remodelers and with the state, but that can be severed with 30-day notice. It's coming up for lease negotiations, I think, right now.
Okay, but by the time the process occurs, you maybe could have already signed a lease, and then it would be subject to that? I mean, I think there's just some unclear things that if you're an individual that's looking at it, that's an important factor, so that's why I ask about it.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
I think the intent of Idea Inc. is to please everybody in the mix, and I misspoke and said that that was in agreement. That is an Idea Inc. idea, that they will take care of the remodelers. Now, let's say if somebody from Denver comes in and bids that they have no obligation there to those leaseholders.
Unless there's a signed lease, you can't extinguish that.
The lease that the state has with the remodelers, it's tenuous at best, it's not a great lease. And the remodelers, when we first got it, the lease was a great thing, and every time they improve it, the lease goes up and up and up. And the remodelers aren't, the remodelers aren't real fond of that either. And so, you know, if Idea Inc. gets it, it's their intent to keep that whole and try to find a, to try to find a developer that will, that will come on board, buy that, help those people find a new location, maybe to the back of the lots, or to a whole new location that works. I think with Idea Inc., we get a lot of, we get a lot of opportunities because they have intent to help everyone in the mix. When it goes past the minimum bid to whoever is buying, we don't have that qualification.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if I understand it, that it'll originally go, assuming that the Idea Inc. is the successful bidder, then they have the opportunity to work out something with the remodelers' park and then subdivide the ground into smaller pieces, about like what's across the street? And, but still, what's the question regarding the city regarding a special improvement district?
Your Honor, we haven't really talked about a special, I mean, that's, that's an option of the city if they wanted to do a special improvement district, but that's, that would be up to the developer, whoever purchased that would have to come to the city and ask if they wanted to do that.
I agree. Those are things in the future that if this goes through, you know, if, 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 well, it's pretty hard to answer those questions at this point in time, if that happens. The thing that we're focusing on at this time is, my understanding, is to get that ground into private hands, so then we can sort out these kinds of questions. And I'm not suggesting at all that they're not important questions, they are important questions. But getting this into private hands at this point in time is the most important question for us right now. And if we don't get it into private hands, those are all moot points. You know, they have no, no point of discussion. So we probably haven't spent the time, even though we've had innumerable meetings, you know, discussing a lot of minutia regarding this operation, but, you know, to try to answer a lot of those questions in terms of local improvement district, or what size water line it's going to take, or, you know, where the roads are going, and on and on and on. Those are interesting, they're important, they're going to have to be settled by someone, but right now, we need to be focused on getting that land into the private sector, and then we can do the development that's needed.
And I certainly understand that, Mayor, and that's, as an individual, and I was looking to bid on this, I'd be asking these very questions that I'm asking now.
True.
And all I'm asking is, is the city willing to entertain a special improvement district? I think that's a fair question. You're obviously wanting to put it in private hands, and if you do in fact want to get it into private hands and get it developed, special improvement districts are really important to the future development of any property throughout this community, whether it be residential, commercial, or whatever it is. Special improvement districts, I believe, are very rare and considered quite foreign, but they are a wonderful vehicle if you want to do developing.
But I don't think the council or the city is prepared to say that, yes, we're willing to do that, or no, we're not. I, maybe, misspeaking here, I don't know, but...
Your Honor?
Your Honor.
I mean, we, we can't commit to spend funds that we don't even know what, how much we would be looking at.
Well, I don't think that they're necessarily funds, you just basically back the financing with a special improvement district, is the way I understand it. And I believe that your ordinances do allow that, it's just that no one ever does it. But we're looking at, it's some pretty serious impact, at least in the residential, and it's something that really should be discussed and considered. It helps bring land to a developable stage, whether it be commercial or residential. And it's, it's never been, whenever, whenever I brought up the subject of a SID or a special improvement district, it's always, I always look like I'm from outer space. So it's important that if the city wants to participate in development, which you're saying you want to do, then I think they need to be open to that sort of method to do it.
I think it's safe to say that, given the extent that we've gone to in the past, and the thousands of dollars that have been spent trying to get this land into private hands, and now having this opportunity, I think it's safe to say that we'll do whatever we can within our ability to make it a successful development venture. I can't imagine that we would get this land and then walk away from it. You know, maybe that's, but that's just personally speaking.
Your Honor?
I understand.
Yes, Councilman Gard.
You know, the only other place that this falls into my recollection is the lots at the airport. And there was a lot of development done at the airport with this same type of financing. And they were, they were flat for a while, and all of a sudden, they're now selling, and people are deciding that that is a viable option for them to move up to the airport lots and to get in and participate. And the city's starting to recoup that, those sales. My worry is that we get an appraisal, and no one knows this better than you. We get an appraisal for 1.6, and all of a sudden, the value isn't there. And we've got the minimum bid, and now we've promised that we won't sell this for any less than, than, and I talk like I'm in the group, this is Idea Inc. that's got it, right? And so they're, they're not going to undersell the market, so they've got this product at $1.6 million, and they're trying to find buyers for it. And all of us know the property that everyone wants is exactly next door to Walmart. The rest of it is an alfalfa field. And so that's the hot item right there. And when that's sold, then, you know, the plan that we've seen puts a cinema down on the end of Honor Farm Road, and, you know, that'd be great if it went clear to there. A lot of money would be made in that process. With Steve's thought that we would get many bidders, you know, when you asked me about a special interest group, if we nailed somebody from downtown Denver that wanted to come in and put a strip mall, I'm sure we'd want to hang all the expenses on him. Wouldn't we not? We'd, we'd want to put all the expenses on him. But if we, if Idea Inc. gets it, and they're our friends and fellow citizens of Riverton, and all of a sudden, we need to be of assistance, just the same way they are going to be of assistance to move the remodelers' park, it's a joint effort then. And so, you know, you got to play the game, you got to put the ball out there and see where it goes. And hopefully, we get other bidders besides Idea Inc., which takes it out of Idea Inc.'s basket and back into a private developer, who is now saddled with all of the development and has paid a lot of money for the lot next to Walmart, and has a wheat, and has an alfalfa field, is really what they've got.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I assume that Idea Inc. would be on the hook for all the improvements as well. The special improvement district is simply a guarantee that still goes against the land and has to be retired. If Idea Inc., they have this $1.6 million, and there's no buyers out there, so they end up only, say, selling it for $800,000, they can, they don't have to make the Wyoming Business Council whole. So the whole idea that it, that it... So the whole idea that it discounts ground at public expense is still out there.
And it discounts across the street, is what you're trying to point out?
Yes.
Correct. And so, yeah, I just don't know that there's a glass ball that she can look at that and make sure that that happens, but we're back to that same old million-dollar question, how do we get this ground out of state hands? This is probably the best avenue to get it back to a point where it's in the game, and private industry can try to make it, turn and make it work. The very best opportunity is if we get a bidder that is not Idea Inc., and then they can come to the city and say, could we get a special improvement district on this property? Because it is going to be extremely costly. And more than that, if you really develop that, it's not out of the realm that the state highway department would make you put in a frontage road, and that would really talk in expense. And so, I do understand what you're saying, the problem is, we've really struggled all the time that I've been on the council to even get this back to a point where we could get it into private hands.
Well, if I may, Your Honor, I think that if the city were to say, we will assist in if we need special improvement districts, and another, any other bidder, all the bidders that are coming out of the woodwork for this, they need to know the answers to those questions I ask. So that's why I ask those.
Those are good questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue? Mr. Yutz, would you care to?
I'm listening.
You're listening, all right. Anyone else would like to address the council? Ellen? No? Kevin?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing at this time.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it's closed the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of Resolution Number 1302.
Your Honor, I would make the motion to approve Resolution 1302.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there a discussion? We've already had quite a discussion, I guess.
Your Honor, I would just like to make the report that I've only had two people contact me, both were opposed to the purchase. One was in agriculture, and one was a local businessman. After we talked, you know, they didn't have any great solutions on how to get the ground in public hands, and I think that is the million-dollar question. Does it benefit us to get it into private hands if somebody just buys it and sits on it like it's been the Honor Farm? You know, the price goes to 6 million dollars, and we don't get any value there. And so, you know, anybody that's going to spend this kind of money, my only defense for that, probably wants to make their money work, probably wants to get it into pieces and into people's hands that can put things on that property. And so, it is not going to be cost beneficial to raise hay on at that price. And I don't know, hay's been an exploding market, maybe it will be profitable to be there, but those are the only two comments that I've had, and they've both been negative towards it after we had a discussion about it. They didn't know any other way, and I'm open to any other way that they can come up with, but this is the best idea that I can think of. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman Gergen. Anyone else care to comment? I share those. I've thought about this a lot, and it is a big step, but it's one of those things that I've lived here my whole life, and that's always been a hayfield, you know, but our community is growing out that direction, and I think in order for us to be able to plan and to get it into our master plan and start doing a little bit of planning and thinking about it and whatnot, the only opportunity for us to do that, to dream for the future for Riverton, is to have it, something that we can do with, and the way it is now, it's state property and we can't touch it. And so, we had to jump through a lot of hoops to even get the modelers park out there, and as been pointed out, since the modelers park has been improving over time, why their rent is going up, so, anyway, that's interesting how that works. But I would like to hear if there's any other solution, but we certainly haven't had then, and it was only through the efforts of Senator Bebaut that he was able to pass Senate File 90 and make this even a possibility. And this is the first time it's ever happened in the state of Wyoming to have something like this, and so, of course, it's going to have some rough edges and some questions and, you know, yada, 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 so, but it's an opportunity that I just think that we just have to move forward on. As a part of this discussion, Resolution Number 1302, in the whereas is, it says, "Be it further resolved that Stephen Weaver, City Administrator, is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the city of Riverton to act on behalf of the city council on all matters relating to this grant application." As you all know, I'm a short timer around here, and so, when this comes into effect, it won't affect me, but I would feel more comfortable if there was some verbiage in there that Stephen Weaver, who I have 100% confidence in, you know, act in consultation with the council or with the mayor in that verbiage. Stephen sits on the Board of Idea Incorporated, is my understanding, is that correct, Stephen? And so I just think from a public perception standpoint as well, it would be good to have the oversight of the council or the mayor on that. But as I've indicated, I can probably live with the will of the council on that particular issue, so...
Your Honor.
Yes.
That's a good point.
Would anyone care to make a motion to amend that resolution?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to amend that, that we put the ultimate choice on the mayor and council instead of Mr. Weaver.
Your Honor.
Yes.
In your point there, that he's the soul, he would be our representative, but he would find that he would be seeking our approval, wouldn't he?
Well, the way that it's written, as the authorized representative of the city of Riverton to act on behalf of the city council on all matters relating to this grant
We have a timeline on this.
So, would there be a problem with changing that, Stephen, or do you see what I'm concerned about?
No, I don't see any problem, Your Honor, it's, this is just related to the grant application, so we're not talking...
So it doesn't have anything to do with further than that?
I mean, if we're talking paying a massive bill, it's going to have to come back in front of the council anyways, so it's...
Okay, so maybe my worries were overstated there.
Doesn't count, then.
Okay. Well, with that discussion, and we should have had that discussion before this meeting, I can see that, so, I apologize for that. Okay.
It wasn't seconded, so it can pass away.
Is there any other discussion on this matter at this time? Okay, the chair would call for the vote, all those in favor of adopting this Resolution 1302, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, mayor votes aye, motion carries. Item number nine is adoption of proposed conceptual master plan, Honor Farm property, city administrators' report.
Yes, Your Honor, I talked about this a little bit, this is just, in order to comply with the staff at the Business Council, they would like us to actually adopt this proposed conceptual plan, and so, it's not sticking us in water or adding anything to the master plan, this is just a conceptual plan of what, where possible street layouts could be and what the zoning would be. We held a public hearing back in April on the same thing, but the council just held a public hearing and heard the comments, and that was it, they didn't formally adopt it, and that's what they're asking for from the Business Council.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion regarding this proposed conceptual master plan?
Honor, I would move that the council adopt the proposed conceptual plan for the Honor Farm property.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, is there a discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Gergen.
When you say we're not stuck in any kind of concept, what are we stuck in? This is a conceptual drawing, and I suppose...
Yeah, it's conceptual, it could change.
I suppose if a developer came in, and we would be able to look at whatever zoning he brought with that development, and how far he wanted to go, and, you know, my problem is, I think that all of us know what property is the highest on the list and worth the most value, and then, we don't want to be left with a pile of weeds that happens between here and the Honor Farm. And to get somebody to actually farm that is going to be difficult, once we take it out of that, that 302 acres makes it difficult, so, I don't want to be left with a, and somehow we had to keep that in mind, and whoever holds that, even if it's Idea Inc. is responsible for maintaining that property, that's going to come at a high expense till it's developed. So, the conceptual drawing of it, you know, it was elaborate, and probably won't get to that state of development in our lifetime, but I just wondered how tight the weeds are when it comes to what the concept is.
Yeah, Your Honor, it's not, obviously, any zone change would actually require someone to submit an application for a zone change, it would take three readings, just like we do any other zone change. This is just a conceptual plan, so that they have, so that everyone agrees this would be, would work if that's what was being proposed.
So from, Your Honor, from a developer's point of view, what we're saying right now, it's, when I go back into Sandy's office and want to change that, I'm going to have to go through all the readings to get it done from this point. If I decide to put a commercial use on the back behind Walmart where it's zoned residential, I'm through three readings, correct? So it really is, it's as concrete as our zoning gets, correct? Thank you, Your Honor.
It's as concrete or as flexible as it gets, and I remember when we were having the discussion about the old hospital property down there, and when the public was told that it would be residential A, and Councilman Heiser just could not let go to that, and yet, you know, we did our responsibility by putting it in residential A when we got rid of it, but that doesn't mean that it stays that way in perpetuity, that it has the flexibility to change as times and needs change, and, but, this...
But, Your Honor, but the process has got to go through what we have continually done on new properties.
That's right.
Three readings.
That's right.
And so, when we're gone and our heirs are looking at it, maybe their ideas are different.
That's right.
And they have three readings.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the special council meeting at this time.
A motion to adjourn.
Okay, your second?
Second.
It's been moved in second and to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.